Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez-Talakia.
Here.
Alexis Grimes.
Here.
Erin Johnson.
Here.
Jim McKay.
Christine Mauer.
Here.
Anna Smith.
Here.
It is 7:31 PM with the quorum of the board present. I now call this special meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We have a precise agenda this evening, so we will be moving on to our second item, Citizen Comments. This is our portion of agenda where we have citizen comments come and speak to us. Please note there are other ways that you can communicate with the board. This agenda item time is set for us during our meeting to hear from our community. Know that during a special meeting, we are restricted to the items that are duly posted on our agenda, and we as a board are also going to be restricted in the ways we can interact with you during this meeting per our board operating procedures and policy BED Local, which states the board shall not deliberate or make decisions regarding any subject that is not on the posted agenda. So also note that this format therefore can't be a conversation or back and forth discussion. We'll ask that your comments respect that limitation, and as such please refrain from directing comments about an individual by name who would not be able to respond. Our board operating procedures enumerate further requests. I'll just sum up by saying we encourage polite and professional conduct. We also ask that the audience and those participating help us maintain the decorum of this meeting. As such, there should be no outbursts or verbal demonstrations during citizen comments. Community, I also need to apologize. I think there might be some confusion that's being contributed on the issue of decorum. I do believe personally the art of discussion deliberation is quickly becoming a lost practice. I understand that we can get caught up in emotion, so when I remind our community and our audience to be respectful of each other with those we do and don't agree with, that's when I would say, please remember, let's keep decorum, please no verbal outburst. My voicing this desire to hold respectful dialogue has evidently caused more issues. So I don't think a general reminder at this point is going to help us all together. I don't think a plea for respectful interactions is really helping before I actually end up giving a warning and asking for removal if you are disrupting the meeting. So if that isn't working, the next step is to know that I'm not going to be saying, please remember decorum. You should remember decorum. We've already talked about it, and y'all know what we expect from decorum. Administrators have been empowered to identify a person and ask them to leave if necessary, if their actions are disruptive to the meeting. Again, I don't plan to do the simmer-down reminder. I don't think that's going to help anybody. Also, when I call your number, you will have a reasonable time to make your way to the podium, and then I'll start your time at that juncture. Please be aware of your speaker order. Get your materials ready. Come up here and start speaking when your number is called. I would like to make sure that we honor and respect each speaker's time. Each speaker, since this is a special meeting, will have up to 1.5 minutes to speak. Without further ado, let's go ahead and call up our speakers. Speakers, when you come up, remember, come up to the front of the podium. You speak to the board, not to the audience, and please conclude your remarks when it gets to the 1.5. That being said, we will have speaker number one come up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Susan, and I live in LISD District. I'm here tonight with concern regarding filling Jim McKay's position. The district needs to allow community input into board member selection and hold a special election in November rather than appoint a board member. The board and administration have made too many decisions without parent input or permission. We need to rebuild trust between the board and our community, please. By not appointing but allowing the public to choose through election, this would go a long way to rebuild community trust.
Okay, speaker number two.
Good evening. My name is Tracy, and I live in the Leander Independent School District. I'm here tonight with great concern regarding filling Jim McKay's position. I agree that allowing community input would be a step toward rebuilding trust. Appointment would not be a transparent process and would give an unfair advantage to an appointed incumbent during the next election. It is not fair for the board and the superintendent to give an unfair advantage to a future board candidate. That would be like a former district employee joining in the race and then dropping out after the filing deadline in order to secure the district's preferred candidate's position. A clear manipulation of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number three.
We all have a myriad of ways in which we can describe ourselves: black, white, Latinx, Asian, Native American, Christian, Jewish, Buddhist, Muslim, atheist, single, married, divorced, widowed, gay, cisgender, transgender, military family, differently-abled, English as a second language speaker, left-handed, right-handed. I could go on. If everyone here create a list to describe themselves, each list would be different and unique, just as we all are. You may not immediately understand or identify with someone else because your list may be very different from theirs, but that is where the opportunity for growth is. Tell me about you, about your past, about your experiences, about your family, about your customs, and about who you are. We may not share many similarities, but I can listen and learn and grow. I urge you to choose someone to fill the board vacancy who will respect and honor each person's individual list. It is a trustee's job to serve every child, not just those who have lists that look like theirs. In fact, the greater challenge is for you to understand those who are less like you and explore the best way to serve them. This position requires you to be humble enough to admit that initially you may not even know how to serve every child. You may need to ask questions, listen, and learn. Please find someone who will be interested in welcoming and serving every single child who lives in this district, no matter what their list looks like. Thank you.
Speaker number four.
Is it still on? Okay. Good evening, trustees. My name is Mike Sanders, and I'm here to speak to you a little bit about the replacement for Jim McKay. The tendency might be for you to pick someone who thinks the same way that you think and is not different from yourself. But what we really need is a diversity of thought in our board of trustees. We need different ways of thinking. And what I've found is that oftentimes when folks say, you know, "We want diversity, we want diversity," they really don't want diversity. They just want more, just like, more people the way they are. And so I would encourage you, as you look to find a replacement for Jim McKay, that you would look for someone who is diverse, someone who is different, who doesn't necessarily think the same way you think, but can offer other perspectives on things that you're trying to decide on. It's the multiplicity of perspectives that gives us a better ability to make our decisions. And when we don't allow a multiplicity of perspectives, we condemn ourselves to making bad decisions. And there have been a lot of bad decisions made in recent months in our school district, allowing this pornography, this filthiness in our schools. You folks are responsible for that, and you folks need to accept that responsibility and hopefully, you know, repent and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number five.
Hi, I'm Sheila Pogson, or Mrs. Pogson. My plan was to come here and thank all of you for your service and everything with the board, but given a minute and a half, I have to go to my key points, which I hope isn't a waste, because I really wanted to come and thank Jim McKay, and I guess he's not here. So hopefully, he's out there in the ether watching. I just wanted to say to Jim, I thank you so much for what you did, what you've done for LISD, what you've done for our country. I know your job outside of here is not easy, and it's what most people wouldn't even come close to trying. I just want to thank you for being the voice of reason so many times. You would ask questions. You just amazed me in how you knew so much about so many different things. It was such a broad range. I mean, you could talk about air ventilation, and taxes, and books, and masks, and you just seem to either be a genius or have done a lot of homework. And so I also thank you, Jim, for your transparency. I always knew what you were voting for and why you were voting for that. Sometimes, you know, it wasn't always clear with others, and you were just really clear about your reasoning behind your votes, and thank you. I really appreciate it.
Speaker number seven. Wait, wait, I'm sorry. I said speaker number seven, six. Did six already come up and speak?
No.
Six is next. Okay. I apologize, speaker seven. Got off count there.
Hello, my name is Patricia, and tonight I'm calling on the -- I'm sorry. The resignation of one LISD board member is not enough. The board has let parents, students down when they allowed pornographic books to circulate on LISD campuses. As a parent, a taxpayer, and a member of this community, I call on the current LISD board members, all of you, to resign. I am demanding that the board members' replacement process be transparent and demand that parents are part of the process to fill the vacant board member seats. Thank you.
Speaker number seven.
Good evening. Good evening, board members. My comments that I brought prepared tonight were specifically for Jim McKay, and I'm going to give them to him in absentia. I want to thank Jim for his efforts during the past year or so when we've been in these discussions. I've not always agreed with Jim. I've not always agreed with you, Jim. I've not always agreed with your votes. But one thing that I want to acknowledge tonight, Jim, is that you have a lot of character. You come and reached out to a lot of us, including me, even though we didn't agree. And I want to acknowledge that character in Jim, someone that we could really discuss, even though we didn't always agree. I'll offer to the rest of you, there have been moments and times and comments and votes where I haven't agreed with all of you, but at points, even though we don't agree, there's no need to attack and condescend and disrespect your public. Thank you.
Speaker number eight.
Often I'm reading the anonymous letters of others who fear retribution by coming forward. It's a valid fear. Look no further than the online name-calling, character assassination, and video manipulation from the last meeting for proof of this, but I digress. Tonight is about the resignation of a board member. Jim, who I wish you were here, thank you for your service to our country and to the years of service here at Leander ISD. While you and I have very different political views, you've remained open to hearing all sides of a position, perhaps the only one on the board. While we disagree, you've maintained an attitude of respectful debate without resorting to adolescent cheap personal attacks. You've done this despite not having received the same treatment even by your colleagues on this very board. I can only pray that when your seat is vacated, it is replaced with someone who shares that sense of respect that focuses on educational solutions free of social and political bias. As a district, we are in desperate need to restore balance, and it starts with this board and leadership, a balance that accurately reflects all of the community and redirects our primary focus back to the education for our children. You have the option to appoint a new member or to order a special election. In effort to regain trust, I ask the board to listen to community input and choose the electoral process. You have this choice.
Speaker number nine.
We are community divided as a direct result of a district that continually views education through a social and political lens. You are so focused on the hyperbolic word salad such as defining the hopes and dreams of students. How can students define and develop hopes and dreams if they don't have the basic skills to create them? Reading, writing, math, and history affords the opportunity to learn and develop the skills required to achieve those dreams. For the last several years, this board and district leaders have focused on nothing but social issues that are not reflective of our community. The focus has been on everything but education. With the resignation of Jim McKay, the district needs this position filled by someone who is primarily focused is education and student academic success. This should happen through an election. You have the option to appoint, or you may order a special election. Based on the current board, district leadership, and poor student academic performance, there are legitimate concerns that an appointment would not be filled by a person with an educationally-driven focus for our district. Additionally, an appointment would give an unfair advantage to an incumbent during the next election cycle. The special election options allows community input, restores parental rights, and creates an opportunity to rebuild trust, something that is desperately needed. You have 180 days to fill the seat, which is more than enough time for an election. Please choose the special election option for this November. Choose wisely, LISD. All eyes are on you.
Speaker ten.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank Jim for his service to this country and services board. I as well did not agree with Jim on many issues, but we did talk occasionally, not often, but here. I still wish you'd have called me, because I have been trying to save this board for some time, and this board has been very reluctant to give me a call, so I can try, try to understand. I heard before, we would have meetings where someone could sit up there and in front of everyone, on record, have a conversation. A conversation, a friendship, a back-and-forth, listening. This board has only one choice, and that is truly to do an election for November if they want any credibility, which they have very little at this point. I have records in my hand, which I will not go into, which shows the credibility is non-existent. But I will leave you with this. Ezekiel 25:17. "The path of the righteous man is beset on all sides by the inequities of the selfish and the tyranny of evil men. Blessed is he whom in the name of charity and goodwill shepherds the weak through the valley of darkness, for he is truly my brother's keeper and the finder of lost children." And I will strike down with great vengeance and furious anger those who attempt to poison, destroy my brothers, and you will know my name is the Lord when I lay my vengeance upon thee.
Speaker eleven.
Hello. Now, I wasn't born here, but as the saying goes, I got here as fast as I could. And one of the things that really was really reinforced for me and my family when we got here was that volunteer work feels great, you know, giving back and helping your neighbor, especially anything that helps the kids. You know, and it starts, you start doing things to help your own kids succeed, but then pretty soon you're doing things for all the kids, because you care about their well-being as much as you would anybody else in your family. You know, and many of the things that my family tries to do to help was inspired by the people up here in this room, you know, one person in particular who's not. So the leadership that you've all shown, you know, and the care with which you've tried to make really important decisions, it's inspiring. It's important. It makes a big difference, you know, and 40,000 kids are much better off because of the things that you do every day, so keep up the good work. You know, the impact of the things that you do here will be felt for years to come, so I thank you for that.
All right, that will conclude our citizen comments portion of the agenda. We will now move into our discussion action items. First item, 3A, is to accept the trustee resignation. Trustee McKay has tendered his resignation, so we'll need a motion to accept his resignation. You just would say? Motion to approve trustee McKay's resignation.
I move that the board approve the resignation of Jim McKay. A second.
I have a first from Christine and a second from Anna. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor to accept the motion, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll now move on to our next item, option 3B, options for filling board vacancy, and we'll have Holly Wardell come up and talk to the board about what are the various options for next steps.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. Dr. Gearing, as you probably heard from the public comments already, there are two options that you have for filling this vacancy. Because more than a year lasts on Mr. McKay's term, you're required by law to fill the vacancy within 180 days. Your options are to call a special election or to fill the vacancy by appointment, and there are various ways you can go about doing that, but basically, the remaining members of the board would vote to select the Mr. McKay's replacement. With respect to the special election, I believe it may be, we can check on this if you're really interested, but I believe it's a little late to get that on the ballot for this November, but you can call a special election at any time. It doesn't have to be on one of the uniform election dates of May and November. But there is also a significant cost associated with that, and I have not been able to provide, come up with an exact cost. We would have to work with the county and get an agreement in place to borrow their election machines, voting machines. And, but I do have at least the expenses.
All right. I'm sorry, we'll need to go ahead and take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back from there, however long we need, but we're planning about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it is 8:18 and we are back in open session. Holly, will you continue with your remarks where we left off?
Sure, just a couple of more remarks so you can make an informed decision. The information that we have so far on the cost of the election from 2020, and this was an election that you conducted jointly with other entities, so you shared the cost with the county, is that amount was $153,797.76, and it would have been more except Travis County got a grant for about $53,000 to cover some of the other costs of that. So there will be, if you decide to go the election route, there will be some legwork that needs to be done in figuring out what the cost of that will be and making arrangements to make sure that you have election services and publication of legal notices. That was it.
Can you clarify, was that 2020 election, May or November?
That would have been the November.
And then the other option if there's not election?
Is filling by appointment, filling a vacancy by appointment. That would be where the remaining board members select someone to take that seat.
So Holly, just to clarify, so you said that cost of $153,000 in 2020, that was with grants and additional funding from Travis?
That's my understanding, yes. So there was a grant.
This would, if we, without those funds, this would be more?
Probably, probably. So we'll have to do some legwork on getting actual numbers and putting things in place with that. Could be more, could be less, but could be more.
Can you firm up the timeline around the November election date? Help us understand whether that's still a possible timeline or what the potential limitations are.
I'll have to look at the election calendar at the Secretary of State's website if we're interested in doing that.
I think we need that information.
Okay, we can, we can look at that.
So board members, I know there are more questions. I have been advised by Holly that we have those questions enclosed unless there's any general questions you have for process. Erin, do you want to ask some general process questions while we're here in open?
We'll come back. If you, if you're ready to go to closed, we can do that and we can ask more when we come back, I suppose.
So for general process questions, open. Okay, then we'll ask attorney questions in closed. So board members, for purposes permitted by Texas Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and/or attorney-client privilege matter are to deliberate appointment of public official. We will now be moving into closed session. There will be new action in closed. We will come back into open when we are concluded. It is 8:20 and we are going to closed. Thank you.
All right, board members, it is 9:11 PM. We are now in open session. There are no other, well there are no motions from closed and there are no other items before this board at this time. Therefore we will adjourn. Meeting adjourned.